All right, we're going to call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners for Wednesday, April 20th.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dunn. Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Waymire.
President.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Leonard Chesbrough, thank you.
Let's pray. Father God, we're thankful for this day you've given us. And Lord God, our scripture reading is going to come out of Second Chronicles 7:14. "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin and heal their land." Heavenly Father God, our land needs a healing, our nation needs a healing, Lord God. I ask the Lord that you forgive us of our sins, forgive us of our shortcomings, and Lord, help us be drawn closer to you every day of our lives, Lord God. And Lord God, just help us to be, help us to be who you'd have us to be, Lord God. Be godly, be forgiving. And Lord, we just thank you for your word. We thank you for your many promises and your word, Lord God. We know, you know your word is true, and we know that the truth will set us free, Lord God. And we give all the praise and all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. We're going to start with correspondence and organizational business. The Franklin County Agriculture Society was not able to join us when we had our community partners' funding requests, and we had some questions. So we have Trina Lacy that is here today, if you want to come on up. And I think our questions were not necessarily about the regular one, but the additional amount that was asked for, I believe. So anyway, whatever you can tell us.
We asked additional money this year because, I don't know how long it's been since you guys have been in CB Hall, but it is in desperate need of upgrades. And one of the major upgrades that we need is handicap accessible bathrooms. And so what we'd like to do is to have an addition onto the building to give additional bathrooms outside that are accessible from the outside so we can, if people are in CB Hall having an event, if the barns are being used, they have access to bathrooms too without interfering with the bath, whatever's going on in the hall. CB Hall has so many little things that need to be maintained. New windows need to be placed. I was jamming paper in them the last meeting to get them to quit shaking with the wind blowing. It's just gone unattended to for so long with minimal funding because, as you know, the fair does not bring us a lot of money. It just kind of is a clean slate and a wash. CB Hall is our main income. And so to keep, to keep up with all the new venues in town, we really need to upgrade and make ours more appealing. And one of the other big projects that we'd like to do is get their driveway fixed that runs along the armory because it is in horrible, horrible shape. We did get a bid from Kilo Construction on that, and they bid at about $5,000 to resurface that for us. I mean, other big things that we need to do are put up new gates because the traffic that we have coming in and out of the grounds on a regular basis is, people think it's a highway, I guess. They use it to go over to the walking trails. People just sit and park there for I don't know what reason, but we redid all the dirt work two years ago for all the roadways around the barns, and it's already needs to be redone because of the mass traffic that just runs through there constantly.
Resurfaced, is it the asphalt in it potentially, or probably not?
Yeah, well, I think they're resurfacing the asphalt part of it. I mean, eventually, we would love to have all of it, but I just, I don't know if that would be feasible around the barns or not. So I don't know. They, right now, our main focus is that main entryway because you don't almost swallow your truck. So those were the big things that we were, like I said, our main, our main thing is the handicap bathrooms.
Have you got any bids or any, anything about that one?
We have some, we've, I don't remember who it was, Justin talked, it was one of the general contractors here in town. They're working on a bid for us now, and I believe they've got a couple others to get us bids, but we haven't heard back from them yet.
Have you ever thought about pathways growing out through the Blue Cross Blue Shield that's run through our health department? I know that there's been money provided through that for, put the restrooms in at the ball fields of Richmond. They've allocated money for new bathrooms in the ball field at Rantoul, and I don't keep day-to-day track of, I know they've done several others.
I didn't know of that. It was, you said it was.
Sheila Robertson with the health department here. She's the overseer, and then there is a board that's, she's on that board, and those are the kinds of things that they have approved in the past. I'm not saying it's an automatic, but I know they've done several.
Sheila Roberts, okay.
You can just call the health department, they'll get her, get you in contact with her.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I know one of our commissioners was concerned about generators out there, the electric used during the fair.
Yes.
Where there's cords run everywhere, and yeah.
Yeah, and that was, that's another one of the things that we have installed new lower energy lights in the steer barn last year to help with that power usage. We do try to keep everybody using generators at the one end of the barn. I know upgrading the electrical throughout the whole grounds has been a major conversation, especially through the vendor booths. I know we upgraded the line from the pole over to the poultry barn last spring, I believe it was. So we would like to get the lights upgraded in the show barn also. So I mean, we're trying, we're trying to do things to help conserve the energy and help with the electrical pot so we could possibly do away with. I don't believe we even got a big generator last year. It was just, if there was generators, it was the foragers using it for their cattle.
Any other question?
I would just, and we had this discussion at our initial community partners' presentations, but we have a unique opportunity right now, as you all know, with ARPA funds. And she's here presenting as a community partner, but if we wanted to use some of that money to take care of some of these kind of one-time expenses, I think that would be highly appropriate. And so I think she probably needs some feedback. If you have a particular interest in one of them, then let's try and get some bids in here, and whether that's the restrooms. I do think that, that reaching out to the health department would be a good idea, but that's, that's far from a sure thing, and, and she's mentioned numerous projects. So is there something specific that, or would you like to pledge an amount of ARPA funds, or how are we feeling about that?
I'd just like to remind you guys that part of the ARPA funds is that they have to have a purchasing policy, and they have to follow that, and we have to have, we have to have that before, and we have to have their bids before the project starts to pledge the ARPA funds so that we can show the federal government that there was a purchasing policy used and that we went through the proper bid process. So I know that you said you had already got, you had already asked for a bid from a local contract, but it would have to be a bidding situation.
Okay. That's not a problem.
I guess what I would ask Janet is why don't you work with them on what that looks like, even if we've got to give them our own purchasing policy for their adoption, then they can adopt it so they have it, and then just help them through the bid process. I think for today, I just, do we have a particular project or amount that?
What was the request for the bathrooms?
Twenty.
Twenty-five, I believe, is what we.
I think it was twenty.
Was it?
I think it was twenty.
I wrote that up a couple.
I think your request as a whole was twenty-five.
As a whole was twenty-five.
Yeah, and you guys had gotten a little over twelve in previous years from us, so that would leave thirteen for projects. But I don't believe they specified in their, in their request, they just said that those were some projects they were looking at.
Can we come up with some numbers, then get back together on this?
Yeah, do we want to see bids for the bathroom project?
I think the bathroom project, the electrical, it sounds like Roy was interested in getting rid of the generators in the public area.
And then the asphalt? So could you bring, and Janet will work with you on this, but could you bring us bids for the bathrooms, the electrical work, and then the asphalt work?
I have the asphalt one here.
Okay.
If you would like it now, where I can bring them all in together.
If it has to be a bidding process, which means that you have to put it out for bids.
Okay, gotcha.
But she can work with you.
Okay.
You actually caught us at a great time.
Well, good, I'm glad.
Maybe.
I was wondering too, if maybe, obviously it doesn't need any more projects, but it sounds like Auto-Watch needs gravel on that main drive and some blade work being that close to public works.
Yeah.
I mean, he doesn't need more projects, but it's right there, so it probably wouldn't be a, if there's not a specific time you need it, I imagine we could probably accommodate some.
In the past, we have construction guys, my husband being one of them, who've come in, and we bring, and Justin brings equipment, I mean, we all try to bring as much equipment in as we can without having to rent, or, you know, we try to all volunteer as much as we can, and without all those people, I don't know if we'd have it as nice as we have. We've worked really hard in the last three years to do upgrades and paint things and just make everything look a lot nicer. We redid the hog barn, 100% donation, not a dime of that came out of the fair board's pocket, so that was, that was nice. So we'd like to do the same thing for the sheep at some point also.
Well, if you're on the fair board, you have a heart for it.
Yes, yeah, you do. You have to have a heart for it to be on.
It would sound like we have a consensus that we would at least like to see some, she can help you go through the, so that we can make it legal.
Yes.
And go through the bid process and then see what kind of numbers we come up with.
Okay.
Hopefully we can help you out.
That is great.
Maybe see what the windows are, I think that's going to be a fairly small ticket item, so.
Okay.
Oh, you would? I'd be surprised, no, anyway.
Yeah.
All right, cool.
Well, thank you so much for your time and for letting us come back.
Hopefully we can help you out.
I will just contact you later.
Yep, yep. And I can email Justin some purchasing policies so you guys can look at them.
All right, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. Do we have any other correspondence or organizational business?
No, ma'am.
All right, any public comment?
Yes.
All right. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Norman?
Norman Woogie, 3790 Pony Road. Surprisingly, the preacher came in and said some things, and it's, so much of these presentations are kind of based on the scripture and the history and philosophy. To refresh, the presentation is a continuation of the last visit to the commission. It closed with a statement of having dreams and being awake while you dream. Number one, I have dreams, expectations. These expectations include, one, public spending of land purchases the county doesn't need. They already have sufficient land, quite a bit, for the landfill, well, it's transfer station. An expectation, an expectation of your eyes being open and seeing the fact that the future performance of an individual can be protected by the history of their past performance in getting a job done. I made a mistake on my computer of being last year's defense of poor effectiveness in the performance of on their job. Same old, same old. That happened of seeing a month of May. It happened in 21, 2021, same old story. Number four, you hired a person who's being paid by our money, the county's money, to do a city job. That is what it appears to me. Is that a good thing? Number five, our money collected by dump fees should be provide more service, a service to promote better and encourage the cleanup of old tires. Old tires encourage mosquito propagation and a health risk to all. Number six, performance of your hired employees that encourage this commission to buy the talks that are given out. They become an accessory to the problem. Seven, my awake dreams is that the wisdom and the foresight of you, of you being expected and exercised. Eight, people are necessary to vote you into office. Don't let special interests sway your way of thinking. Nine, keep your promise of the past years of protecting us from higher taxes that go to the county and the schools. Our personal property taxes are up to 30% for just the schools of $2.90. Ten, you have the control, don't lose that control by giving it away to other people. Thank you.
All right, our consent agenda today is the minutes from, from the meeting on April 13th. Premium payroll in the amount of $308,205.78. Tax change orders in the amount of $563.72. Claim vouchers in the amount of $840,476.50. And approval to participate in the Douglas County Salt Bid Process. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The move. Thank you.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
All right, our first item of business is discussing a consider for approval an automatic aid agreement between the City of Ottawa and Franklin County for the purpose of vehicle extrication. Kristi Hilleker, EMS chief.
Good morning. So yes, the, the first item that I have to bring for you today is, as you know, there are time to time where we have a vehicle collisions that result in entrapment. We do have extrication equipment at the ambulance department, but our primary focus is on caring for the patient. So if we're actively involved in extrication, it does take away from the patient or the patients that are there. Also, with vehicle extrication, it's one of those very high acuity but low frequency skills. We extricate about five to eight times a year. Do practice on it, know the City of Ottawa also practices on this skill as well. County first responders, the majority of the fire districts have their own extrication equipment, but with being volunteer, there is the issue that most of them have to work for a living, so they're not always accessible. The City of Ottawa has, would like to go in an agreement with us that anytime extrication is needed, they would automatically be toned out in the county as well. If they are in the position where they can, then they would respond along with us and help provide those extrication services. So I'm here today to get that approved.
I've reviewed the agreement, and, and it looks fine. This is, to me, this is very good government. These are exactly the types of partnerships that governments should have, and this will allow us to focus on the things that we're best suited to do. So I, I don't see any downside to this and appreciate the City of Ottawa's willingness to entertain this as well.
Any other questions for Kristi? An affirmative motion in support of this item would read as follows. I make a motion to approve the automatic aid agreement between the City of Ottawa, Kansas, and Franklin County, Kansas.
I was going to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And our second order of business is also Kristi, is discuss and review Franklin County EMS first quarter 2022 reports and consider the approval of the first quarter 2022 adjustments and collections reports.
Yes. So I do have with our, our collections report, a total of $54,652.43. And then our adjustments in the amount of $134,472.27. And I will give these to you, Commissioner Dickinson, for a signature.
Okay.
The first thing is you do see our first quarter report for 2022. The, I would like to highlight that as of right now, we're a little over $42,000 over budget where we need to be, so that is a phenomenal thing.
To be clear, that is in revenue.
That is in revenue, yes, just in, sorry, that is just in revenue that we've brought in. You can also see, we're sitting at about 87 move-ups right now, and we've been at status zero 30 times. Did point out too that out of those status zero times, four of those times, I'm sorry, three of those times, we actually had four units out on a call. So still just seems when one call comes out, they all come out. Definitely getting busier. The next thing that we have is just our spreadsheets with our activities report. Ottawa South for this quarter compared to the same quarter in 2021, we're a little bit more busy in that area as well. Richmond also seems to be another area where we're becoming more and more busy, along of course with, with Franklin Township or Wellsville. The next spreadsheet just highlights just the calls per day. Right now, we're sitting in almost four calls a day just out of the Ottawa South District.
This is something that I discussed with the director the other day too, just by accident, started talking about it, about the cost of doing business. And I can remember when, and she probably can too, our car level was around three, maybe four a day. And now, now we're pushing 11, and it takes more people to do that, it takes more fuel to do that, it takes more equipment to do that, plus when you're comparing it to then and now, the fuel is three times as much to do that. And when she gets a call to go out, she can't say, well, our trucks are down to an eighth of a tank today, so, you know, we're not able to run, you know? I mean, that might sound sarcastic, but people got to stop and think about those things. You know, those types of costs that we can't, you can't avoid.
Yeah.
You still got to provide the service, your sheriff included and public works included, you still have to provide the service, even though your cost of doing business is doubled and tripled and quadrupled, you know? You do the best you can to hold it down, and the amount of employees you have, and the more training to cut costs, but you can't cut that call number down. You know, that this, I don't know, I wish there was a way we could cut that call number down, because like a lot of people, a lot of times say, you know, we have increased in numbers, why is that cost to run that department going up and up and up? Right there it is, maybe we're not increasing in the numbers of people in the county, but the service we're having to provide is doubling and tripling, so I thought it was kind of interesting, we talked about it the other day.
Well, and, and I suspect we could find this data, but I believe it to be true that our, while our numbers might not be growing from a population standpoint, our population is aging.
That is correct.
And as it ages, of course, the need for emergency services goes up. And so, yeah, I, Dawn, I appreciate all of that. I think, you know, I, we're always excited to see more revenue, and certainly being $42,000, you know, above projections is fantastic, but there is the, that is directly correlated to having more calls, and we'll get to a point eventually where
Right.
we're having to look at, you know, additional trucks, additional, and we're not there, but I, it seems like every time we do this, I just want to say that, because that day will come, and, and we don't want it to, but we, we know it's coming, so.
We're talking about it more and more.
We are.
And I think you really are trying to get the numbers down by, and that's what your education people are doing.
Correct.
Trying to get out there, and if people are calling a lot, you know, just educate them about.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one's just our activities per district, and of course, Ottawa South is the largest, followed by Ottawa North, and then our transfers are coming in third out of the hospital.
And I, sorry, Kristi, I would just, just point out, because this is a discussion that gets had from time to time, with Advent being, of course, within the City of Ottawa. If you just look at those percentages, 35 in Ottawa South, nearly 20 in Ottawa North, that's 55 and 14 in Advent Health Ottawa. That's almost 70% of our calls just coming from the City of Ottawa, which is just something to, just something to be aware of. So I'm sorry to cut you off, Kristi.
Thank you. The, the next is our, our call types, which again, from trends, we're noticing that trauma is up, and also sick calls are up. And again, as Derek had pointed out, that can be directly correlated with age, lots of falls, also just lots of calls just generally not feeling well. I did provide something new this time. The State of Kansas provides us with what they call the top three every Monday, and it's the top three calls in the state of Kansas for emergency medical services. So I've provided our top five because I thought that that might be, I find it interesting, thought that you would probably find it interesting as well. Overwhelmingly, we're, our number one call is falls. After that is, is just our general sick person, and then, then transfers. Breathing problems are something we routinely, we do as well, and traffic accidents unfortunately are in the top five. In February, which was American Heart Association Heart Awareness Month, it was funny that chest pain actually made it into the top five that month. So it shows that American Heart Association maybe did some good job getting information out there. Our receiving hospitals, Advent Health, we are taking more patients there than we, we did the same time last year. Our call times look exactly pretty much the same. Level of care, as we've talked to, our patients are sicker than what they, they have been in the past. We have, all of our patients have needed ALS care thus far this year. And then last, we do have that unit availability that we talked about with our move-ups and our status zero. Our move-ups are down a little bit from the same quarter of 2021. However, you can see our status zero times almost doubled. We did not have to call in any services for mutual aid this quarter, but we were asked seven times, and we were able to accommodate that, two in Anderson County, and then five in, in Miami County where we had to go assist them.
Good information. Any questions? Comments? Most of this is just informational. The one thing we need to do, take action on is to approve the 2022 adjustments and collections, so a motion would read as, I make a motion to approve the first quarter 2022 adjustments and collections reports. Anybody like to make that motion? Anybody like to make that motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Yeah. Thank you very much. All right. That brings us to our third item of business, which is neighborhood revitalization properties for approval, and Janet has this information.
So you guys have the packet of information there that was attached, the agenda that came from the city of Ottawa. These properties were reviewed by the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee and recommended for approval once they have completed the process and the project is done. They always are added to the property tax rolls in the year after they are complete so that they get a final appraisal from the county appraiser on January 1. So they may sometimes end up paying a portion of a year at an increased tax level, so they make sure they get their full benefit. There, as you can see in the documentation on the memo, there was one property that was reviewed by the committee, and it was approved by the committee, but then after further discussion, they have removed that, and the city of Ottawa will make a determination whether they want to actually expand the neighborhood revitalization project area to include this property. It's on South Olive, and when you look at the neighborhood revitalization maps, it's right next to the Canterbury Court area, and there's only one house there, so they did not include that block because it had Canterbury Court in it, but there is one house there. So they are considering whether they want to expand the project area at that point, and a few other places to include properties that might benefit from the program. But at this time, that project cannot be approved because of it not being in the neighborhood revitalization area. So we just ask for your approval on these properties.
All right, I think we do this regularly, in fact, we just did another 12 that will be coming to us, so it's exciting, that keeps, keeps going on. So affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to approve the proposed properties into the neighborhood revitalization program as each property meets the program requirements, except for the one on Olive.
Go ahead.
All right.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire? Vice Chair Dickinson.
Yes. And that is all of our business, so we'll move on to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, a couple of things today. First, we have been approached by the city of Wellsville about a potential partnership opportunity involving a new ambulance station, and, and don't have all of the details in front of me this morning, primarily because I just wanna get a feel for whether or not you all are interested in, in entertaining the idea. So the, the opportunity is to partner in a new ambulance station in the city of Wellsville. They have, we're currently housed down kind of in their public works complex, and they, the city has bought a building, and they are in the process or about to begin remodeling that building for their police station. They have asked if we would like to partner in adding on to that building, so it would be a joint police station and an ambulance station. We've got drawings of this, there would be obviously, you know, security between the two stations, but it's a, it's a very unique compelling opportunity. This would be over off of 33, they're about to put in new city streets over there, new infrastructure. My understanding is they're not asking us to obviously help in any way with those costs, and we haven't really discussed in, in fine detail the financial details. But I'm just trying to ascertain today, is there interest to begin those talks? And if so, we would absolutely have a study session where we could bring the drawings in, the city of Wellsville could come in, and we could discuss. I, I will tell you generally, based on, you know, just a broad estimate, we would be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood, probably if we were to pay for the entirety of the ambulance addition, it'd be around $400,000. That is the number that I have been given. Now, it hasn't been put, put through a competitive bid process yet, that's, it's no different than, you know, if David Lee were to be estimating costs, he would, obviously, we would ask that it be competitively bid, but is there interest to at least explore it further via a study session?
I think I need to add one question. What is our possible outlook for paying? Where the money would come from?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've talked about it already today. This would be a, a very appropriate use of ARPA funds. So again, we're still, I, I don't know that we, I don't know that Janet's sitting over there with the exact amount, but we were awarded 5.2 million, and I don't, I mean, I don't think we've even spent half a million of it yet, I don't think even close, so we're
I think we're under four still.
still Still 4.6, 4.7, 4.8 million. It would be an appropriate use of those funds if that were something that the board was interested in. Also have Christie here, who would be more than willing to come up and, and answer any questions, but yeah, if
Christie, you want to tell us about their current setup up there in Wellsville?
So currently, the current setup that we have in Wellsville was the, we are with their public works facility. We're in a metal building upstairs. The fire department is housed below us. We are, like I said, upstairs in a building. When you walk in, you'll notice that there's all the windows that we have, the, the three small ones actually look out over the ambulance bay. The bunk rooms have only one entrance and exit point, so that's a concern too. I, I don't know, I wish I could have taken you on a field trip up there to, to see it. Obviously, it's not ideal, we do have all the noise from the fire department, also just their gear, it gets smoky, there's been reports of allergies that have been increased up there at the station several years back, the health department actually came out and did an environmental study there.
And this is something where we're at now, okay, now, we have no room to expand.
That is correct, there is no room to expand.
The theory on this, on that part of it, we would be have room, if we went through, we'd have room to expand, maybe not use it, but it'd be there and ready to go.
So the current drawing, so we currently have one ambulance in Wellsville and two staff up there. The current drawing is for a two-bay ambulance station that would accommodate four, so it would allow us to double our capacity. Now, that is not to say that, that we're ready to buy a new truck and to fully staff it, but we all know Wellsville's growing. I don't think it's, it's hyperbole to say that Wellsville is exploding, we're on the cusp of it, so it's not hard to fathom that, that we would need the extra capacity soon. This would allow us to do that.
How long have we been in Wellsville? Do you know?
I, I do not know the figure right off the top of my head, I think we moved up there in 2007.
I mean, and we moved up there, we just like, this is available, we can use it.
That's exactly how it was.
But now we realize we, we, we need to be there, we need to have a good, a good facility, and, and what a great opportunity to do it at, really at minimal cost instead of building a whole brand-new facility, so.
If we moved up, what we, the discussion was at the time, and they had the state come in and do a study and the whole thing, I think it was a half a call a day.
That's correct.
And now we're up over a call a day, and moving, nothing you want to increase in, but it is.
Sure.
So, and my, now that's my understanding, that actually, the city, the only thing they had to gain in it out of the deal is us being there, because they're gonna be there whether we're there or not.
Yeah, they, they are, and I, and I appreciate that comment, Don. I, I wanna say, Christie and I have met with them a couple times, I'm really impressed with the city of Wellsville and, and how they've approached this. They, they are interested in a true partnership, they're not pressuring us, like, I know they would like to make full use of that, the current building that we are in for their public works, and, and it makes sense for them to do that, but they, their mayor is not pressuring us, their mayor has said, you know, if you don't wanna do this, we can still accommodate you, but I, I think they just truly see it as a win-win for both of us, and, and so I, I think their approach, as much as anything, is what excites me about the possibility, they, it could be good for both of us.
And this would be a quicker access on and off 35.
Yes, we actually timed, even though the roads aren't there, did do some time studies on how long it took to get to K-33 from our current station, and it was about 2 minutes and 15 seconds. With the new location, it would be, it was about 45 seconds.
Which, you know, that, that speaks for itself.
It does.
That is a substantial improvement in response times.
To answer your question, I think that'd be kinda towards the upper limit of what I'd hope, but, I mean, that's a lot of money, but
Yeah.
It sounds like an opportunity, and I know some of the other times we've housed in the same building as other entities, there's some lesson learned, lessons learned there, so hopefully we start early and apply those lessons learned to, to this design and
Yes.
this process and
We would have the, the bay would be the division between the, the ambulance station and the fire department, and we would obviously not just be able to roam around the police department, so that would, we would have our own separate entities, just attached building.
And, and to be clear, in no way, shape, or form am, am I asking for any kind of commitment to that $400,000. It's more, that is just a, a rough budgeted cost, and I can't even, do I believe it's, it's genuine, sure, do I believe it's accurate? I have no idea. I more just wanna know, do you want us to really dig in, put this on a study session, come back and explore it further?
I think it's good to look at, I mean, you possibly stay with it or ahead of it instead of getting behind.
I think you got a consensus that, yes, let's, let's, yeah, okay.
Well, then, well, whether, whether it's a, a study session or a Wednesday meeting, I, I will have this in front of you here in relatively short order, just to have more, more of a discussion about it, so.
Have they already, what is their timeframe? They haven't already moved into the facility yet, or even?
No, I don't, and in fact, I don't even believe they've began the remodel yet. I think, I don't know if that drawing that Chief Hackler sent was just, I have not looked at it, because it would be gibberish to me. I don't know if it was just for the ambulance station, or if it was for their portion too, but I don't believe they've even started it, by any means.
It's my understanding they have not started with the remodel of their space.
Yeah, I know they are anxious to move forward, but they're also respectful of our processes and, and
Well, they don't have roads in yet either, or
And that's, that's, yeah.
Anyway, yeah.
They're just, they're just cut in dirt roads, so.
Any, anything in particular, I, I'm inclined to just, you know, bring the drawings in, maybe try to get some staff from Wellsville here, anything else that you want to see? Just so that we can be fully prepared?
I think, well, we want everything we can see.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, everything you can think of, but I think you guys in the city is already, you know, you pretty well, except for the exact solid number, you don't know them, but you know where, you know, you've already did a study a little bit, what we would gain in, in call times to get on and entertain, and, and most of them need to know it. It, it, it's in the part of town where it's, they're gonna expect their biggest growth right now too, also.
Absolutely.
I mean, it'll be right in where the growth is gonna be, so. And they're gonna have a brand-new street to it, and brand-new services to it, so that'll all be, yeah, be taken care of.
The drivers all be fighting, they'll be going to Wellsville.
Yes.
And with our money at this time, we never could've, only that time I think any better is when we put in the juvenile center and the college moved out, and we was able to put it to justice center, and it only stuck a timing I ever seen before. I mean, we talked about building some up there years ago, a standalone, you know, and we decided not to, and then when we decided not to, the city come up and voluntarily opened up their spot there, free utilities and rent and so forth, you know? And, but it's still, it was an awkward situation too, a little, but it was a good situation compared to nothing, way above nothing. But this would even be, and if you do it there, we'd be completely, it's same structure, but we'd be completely separated, L-Lark Services would be different than their services, where now you had to share some.
Correct. Yes, when you're talking about sharing services right now, the, the crews don't even have a, a kitchen facility, so if they wanna cook a meal, it's either a toaster oven or a microwave, or they have to go downstairs and use the fire departments.
And this would all be one level.
It would be, right, wouldn't have to go up and down the stairs to get to their, to get to their space.
Yeah.
And I don't have to practically spell out, I mean, you're taking calls all hours of the night, and you're, you're sound asleep, okay? And you're upstairs in a facility, and you get a call at 3:00 AM, and you're gearing up, and then you have to go down a flight of stairs to get to your ambulance. It's, it's not ideal. Super appreciative of the fact that I think Wellsville was very generous and, and engaging in, in that relationship, but I also think it's time to strongly consider an upgrade, so.
All right, cool.
Thank you. Thanks, Christie. Last thing, just have had some time to reflect and have gotten immense feedback from, from our lunch last week, and, and just reflection on the premium pay. Morale's really good right now. I've gotten a ton of feedback, I know several of you have as well. Just wanna say one more time, thank you all for, for everything that you have done for our people. It doesn't eliminate the challenges, but it, it certainly helps, and I think these are really good times to, to be working here and to be associated with the Frank, with Franklin County, so thank you all very much for that. That's really all I have.
I've been told we got a few applicants since the last couple of weeks in public work.
Yeah, yeah, and we
Which we hadn't had any.
Yeah, we, so, so the Road and Bridge Superintendent told me that, that, I, I wish he was here, because he could give, but I wanna say, within two days of doing it, we had more applications than we've had in the last six months for those positions, so that's, that's obviously fantastic, I mean, that's, that's fantastic. So yes, they are ecstatic there, and, yeah.
Cool. Casey, do you have anything today? Awesome. Sheriff, do you have anything? Oh, okay. Janet?
Just a reminder to, to everyone listening that next week is the commissioners' conference, so I think we have three of you plan to go to that commissioner's conference, so we will not be able to have a meeting next week because the majority of you will be gone to that commissioners' conference.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up, Janet, because Commissioner Dunn asked me to have that conversation. I, I assume that, that the two of you that aren't going are understanding and okay with us, I mean, we won't have a quorum, so we'll just plan on canceling.
Might, you might not come in next week?
And just to be crystal clear, this, this is, I mean, there are two primary conferences. One is the, the Greater KAC Conference, and this is catered to commissioners. Fantastic opportunity for commissioners to not only network, but just receive education. I mean, this is part and parcel to what you do as commissioners, this isn't a vacation. This isn't a vacation. It's not you shirking your duties. It's you going to a conference that will, you know, help you. So just want to make sure the record's clear on that.
So in partnership with that, the very next week, I will be gone to my statewide conference. So that, we did get someone new hired for my office and she is going to be starting that week, but she will have very limited ability. So Debbie will primarily be by herself. She'll be down here for the meeting, so we will likely be closed, the office will be closed during the time of the commission meeting. So anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know that, let the citizens know that. But as your commission meeting is very important for you guys, my statewide meeting is going to be very important. We are going to have a lot of discussions about Senate Bill 13 and how we move forward with the notices this year and what the expectations are going to be from the state. We are having someone from the state come and discuss with us how we're going to possibly handle all of those, sending the bill to the state for the notifications that'll be sent out this year because we know that they are going to be sent out. So lots of, lots of good information that we'll need to get in addition to a lot of election updates that are changing this year. So anyway, that will be the following week after your conference, so it'll be two weeks until I see you guys.
All right. All right, and we have commissioners' reports. Dawn?
Yeah. Yesterday I attended, as you know, Paul, I worked with Paul here for quite a while, six months, and Derek attended the first one we put together of economic development people getting together from various counties. And we had five different counties represented at our first meeting. Well, yesterday we had our second one. There were several meetings in between that blossomed out of it. A lot had to do with childcare in each one of the counties. They conversed back and forth. Well, yesterday we had our second one. We had it in Anderson County this time, and there was, we had seven counties there. We actually have added two more. Osage County now has an economic development department that they didn't have when we started and that we invited, went in. Even though he's outside of the Lake Region, six counties, Allen County bumps up to us to the south, and so we invited their, and you can ask Paul, just like you mentioned a little bit ago about going to a conference. It's almost, a lot of times, you know, it's just all kind of a lot to absorb, but when you get seven economic development people around the table and they start comparing what they're doing, what, and it's amazing when you have somebody like Paul there and Janet McCray there that's been doing it for a long time. You can imagine these two new people that was on that, at our conversation. Their tablet was so full of notes and stuff that Paul and Janet fed them of different organizations and how they can help them and maybe not help them and different, just programs and conferences and just different. And we learned about a bunch of different expansions that's going on around the community and with the airport in Allen County, which isn't fact in Franklin, but it just keeps coming up the line, you know? And then Paul explained a lot of what's going on in the Wellsville area and Ottawa area. And our grant that we got for out here, Proximity Park, the city got would be a big benefit to all of us. You know, it's always been the battle with no water tower out there. You have water, but no storage. And then with the running the gas, then that'll be a big deal also. So anyhow, I just kind of, I started it with Paul. I've got to the point now, I'm just sitting back and, you know, we provide the bill and they do everything else. And now they're setting themselves up on a regular quarterly meeting now and be in Miami County next. So that's a good deal too there. They've just jumped on the deal and taken it, but now they're going to work together hand in hand. And Craig McGray will be here on, I'll explain, he's on May 3 at our C and D meeting, but he's the head of the commerce for this Eastern Canada. And Paul worked with me to get him to come here. And originally, I got him to come to our C and D meeting, but then we got to thinking, why not invite, we invited all the economic development people from the six counties. So all of them are planning on being here also to, because why not? If you're talking to the guy that sets the rules and writes the checks and things, you might as well be in the same room at the same time, same conversation. That's all I got.
Right.
I'm not bad.
Cool.
Attended the first agency on 18th meeting. Went well. I can't say that there's anything extraordinary I want to take your time telling you about, but some of the federal money gave them some opportunities, take care of some capital needs, but that's it.
I attended the Chamber Coffee for the Rock Creek Care Home. It had been run by Morning Star Care Homes in Rockwood Acres, and then they could not keep it staffed. And so they sold it to Rockwood, and they're actually going to open it up as a dementia, Alzheimer's unit, up to 10 patients, and they already have a waiting list. And so, I mean, it's great. My grandmother had Alzheimer's and for many, many years. And what a great setting to be in if that is what you're dealing with, so. And Rockwood, you know, they have great, the Rock Creek has a great history in town. And then the city of Ottawa had their study session. They had some really great applicants for several of their boards. And then Richard gave an update on the base grant that they are, they are moving forward quickly on that. They've already been in contact with Kansas Gas Service to get that gas in there. So, you know, all of that money is actually going to help, you know, the water tower, the lift station and the gas service out there. So we are at Proximity Park. And so they are definitely moving forward quickly on that. And I believe that is all, unless anybody else has anything else to bring up. Then we are adjourned.
Can we?
Oh, yeah, thank you. All right, all the favors.
All right.